Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 22th Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Kelly?
Here.
Trustee Engenga?
Here.
Trustee Addisobi? Trustee Gale?
Here.
Trustee Lancy?
Here.
Trustee Kerwin?
Here.
Trustee Redd? Trustee White?
President.
President Saunders?
Here.
We have our form. So, communication from the public, please. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak; up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, for trustee and/or the superintendent, or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent, may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Harrington Boyd.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Harrington Boyd, founder and CEO of Last Man Ever Come, home to Devoyant, a hero with autism and epilepsy. I created Devoyant because of my experience in going to school with my mother there. I was traumatized at a young age, seeing him be choked, stabbed, ridiculed, ostracized, and mistreated daily in our classrooms. He endured so much because of his disability, and yet, it never changed who he was at the first. I was always, I always admired him for his commitment to being the person that he wanted to be, no matter how others treated him. He was my hero. Heroes give us hope. When we're going through hardship and looking down, heroes give us a reason to look up again. They teach us how to be kind and compassionate and to fight for good. They make connections with all of us through embodying the aspects of humanity that are positive. That connection is what I have created with my Devoyant cell program. Fostering that connection will allow myself and my team to reprogram the mindsets of children and produce socially responsive adults and young adults in the future. Our students are eager to learn from Devoyant because of its diverse cast of characters representing different backgrounds and supporting inclusion. We know that the excitement and the focus that students experience when learning through Devoyant will help them remember our lessons for a lifetime. Our guide includes resources and materials to be used throughout the school year. It was designed to accommodate to general education, special education, and English new learner populations, and demonstrates core content like main idea and details, rule-based summarization, opinion-writing pieces, and student debates, realistic ones with gavels and everything. In closing, schools need excellent cell programs in these hard times. Many of you are working tirelessly to find programs that can help our children. But I want you all to remember that our children are not just data points to bolster someone's statistics. They are human beings. They are individuals with dreams, aspirations. They struggle sometimes, and they have traumas sometimes. We designed our program because we know that promoting cell by creating a profound connection through diversity, inclusion, equity, and a sense of belonging is of utmost importance for our youth's growth. I came here today to ask for the opportunity to present my program to the Board in hopes that in the future, it can be used in Mount Vernon to benefit this district's youth as well. I would like to thank the Board, the PTA, and the superintendent for allowing me here to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually brought these advertisements, just pamphlets, for anyone that would like to learn more about our program and reach out to us on our website. Just take a moment to hand these out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this contact information on here?
Yes.
Next speaker. Samuel Rivers?
Samuel Rivers, 30, Lockwood, Nevada, Mount Vernon, New York. It's probably coincidence and strange to make that show up. Your microphones are not working, but didn't think I got my own microphone here, and my audience is a lot larger than your audience. This young man, this program should be, you know, you guys should consider it. But unfortunately, I'm here because of an article that I read in the newspaper where, and I would like to congratulate trustee Curran for bringing up this $600,000 of questionable contracts, and through the years, we learned it's $8 million, you know, at a minimum, at a minimum. Because this is a black community, I feel, this goes unnoticed. We pay the highest per capita student in the whole county, the highest taxes, and we're coming up here begging to spend our own money for these programs. This is ridiculous. A shell company or whatever, Justin Spire, I would recommend this Board, because you guys have the power, refer this matter to the U.S. Attorney's Office, because they are only, if this was true, which is in that article, you know, you have wire fraud, you have mail fraud, only the U.S. Attorney, those are federal charges. At minimum, in Scarsdale, maybe a month ago, this is public knowledge, there was a misappropriation of payroll taxes. The superintendent resigned. Anyone here involved in the scam, at minimum, the superintendent should resign here, be suspended, the business manager who let the chicks go out of the thing should be suspended. I mean, this is ridiculous. But I'd say, but the community, the petition is going to be circulating in the community in the coming days for support to have the perpetrate, this is a crime. $8 million? This is ridiculous. Five of you guys are up for reelection this year. So, if you guys don't want to make the campaign, I mean, trustee Curran just showed that she's got elected to do, she's questioning, this is what you guys are, you guys are the Board. You guys should, you guys have ears, you control, you have the power. Immediately, this superintendent should be suspended, or anybody who is involved in, the son should be suspended. This is ridiculous. This is nepotism. This is the direct line, this is her boss, she reports directly. This is ridiculous. You have no policies regarding nepotism here? I mean, you guys are going to continue to be the laughing stock. This city is going to be the laughing stock of the, I mean, it's a problem. It's getting gentrified right now. Your properties are losing value because of this foolishness going on in the community. So, if you don't want to be the laughing stock, you guys got to get your, get your, you don't know what to blame but yourself. Thirty years, black people been in power in this city, and what's going on has been deteriorated. I mean, you guys should be ashamed of yourselves. This is black-on-black crime. But, you know, just like in Chicago and other places, black-on-black crime does not get any attention. But, I'm going to make sure of the attention. Anyone that's involved should be thrown in jail, and they should be sentenced for years, stealing from the poor black kids in the community, which is a tribune to the violence in the community, because they have nowhere to go, and then you guys are doing this stony progress for karate, or whatever these requisitions are, but we demand answers on this justice matter, and we're not going to let this go. I suggest, suspect these things have been going on in the community for years and years, but this is the first concrete evidence that we have some possibly criminal activity that is documented. The school board, I implore you, why are we wasting our money to hire auditors when the federal government can do it for free? I implore you all, get together on a letter and ask the U.S. Attorney, and let the justice fall where they may. I know somebody's maybe your friend and so forth, but, you know, you're here stewards of the trustees' money, the people's money. So, you know, this friendship boundaries left, it's out the door. So, I suggest tomorrow, go to an executive session, craft a letter, and let the public know what's going on, because the public put you guys in power, and the public can't take you guys out of power. So, realize the power that you have invested by the people have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rivers. Our next speaker, Hamarabi Bay?
Evening. I'm brother Hamarabi Bay. I used to be burning models back in the day. I've been to many of these meetings. And one thing I'm glad to see is that we have a bunch of women here. I don't think you know what I'm going to tell you. It's Mother's Day.
Can you speak up a little bit, Mr. Bay?
Mother's Day.
Mother's Day is everything.
Mother's Day is absolutely.
Mr. Bay? Are you going to, speak up to the Board. You're speaking to the Board, please.
Only women have children. My mother had 18 children. I am number two. I'm 82 years old, and I've been here many a times, and I watched the system go down here. Long before any of it was here, the same thing was happening. Swim pool is knocked down for 10 years. The pool down here, the park, there's a waiting pool, no black child would ever land in the swim in Mount Vernon. They trip all over the thing on the school board. So, you got to go and pay, go to a school to do atmospheric refrigeration, which I did. It's ridiculous. This is our hometown here, and we're not doing a good job. Now, somebody asked about a good police officer. I don't know none, and I'm going to tell you why I'm saying that. On a scale of zero to 100, where is the policeman who don't talk about what the policeman did? Not that he did it now. That goes for who's on the Board. If you know something and you happen to did anything, you're not 100% Board member either. So, our children are always suffering in relationships. Fathers don't get along, and children don't get along, and they grow up where they're messed up, and you say, what's wrong with that child? Well, he's a C.D. that was put into the box to put the crap on it. That's all of us in here. What's on your mind now is what's on your mind before even you had a mind. So, let's make Mount Vernon great, if it ever was. And I'm so glad to see you women on air, because without you, there will be no human beings. A man can do anything he want to, but if you don't bring us through, we don't ever get here. Cracker dolls, butterflies, any kind of animal you're talking about. So, you have the power. You have to exercise your power so they understand how strong you really are, because ten dollars a buck, I knew babies and carried for nine months. And you are older than what you think. If you add those nine months on and 10 months that your mother carries you, you have to add them on, so I added mine on. All the time, every November, I get my money back from my mother. So, we disrespecting all of our mothers in here. They lied to you, you believed the lie, and we still carrying on sitting here now like a bunch of dummies. I was dumb too, so I'm just here to drop in on you so you can think about it. Whatever your job is, it has to be done for the children. It has nothing to do with you personally, how much money you made, or who you hired. Let's be, we got to do, and we won't have what we just heard here today. And I want to talk to your head, your brother.
Thank you. Warren Mitchell?
Good evening, Board, Dr. B.C., Cabinet. I sent an email out to the Board today requesting an RFP, which is a request proposal, so that we could finally have an audit, a real audit. Now, Dr. B.C., who in the Cabinet would know if there's an audit going on right now? You? The Board? And the Cabinet?
Yes.
But the Cabinet would be know for certain if there's an audit of special education going on right now. That would be the go-to, wouldn't it? Okay. My email chain today had two different answers come back about whether there's a Board, an audit going on of special education. 2019, 2021, '22. We have students that have been not getting their services for various reasons. We already know it. IEP, special education kids not getting these services for various reasons. It's not about finger pointing. It's about resolution. It's about being able to present to the public, hey, you know what? We noticed what's going on. It's been going on, trustee Saunders, President Saunders, and the junior chair, Special Education Committee for many years. Bless you faithfully. You chaired that committee. Where's the Julia Elliott report? You been had that for how long now? Has it been reviewed? Have we made changes? Why haven't we made changes? Where is this audit? The audit is not happening, according to Assistant Superintendent of Business and Ops. No audit going on. Not certain why I got an email from anybody on the Board telling me that there's an audit going on when there's none. We need an audit so that we can fix the issues. The city needs partnership. The school district needs partnership. And he says the jewel of Westchester, the school district cannot be the joke of Westchester. Our neighboring cities in town should not laugh when they say, I'm from Mount Vernon. People should not say, oh, moving to Mount Vernon, should I do? No, don't put your kids in there, because all they do is try to tear down whoever's running the district. That shouldn't be the case. And speaking of that, one, two, trustee White, trustee Saunders, trustee Bay was not here, myself, and five other humans sat in that room across the hall about four months ago. We vetted people, we interviewed both, and we came to the determination together that Dr. B.C. was the best person to take this district forward, and we chose her to run this district unanimously. Why on earth are we all quiet like a graveyard while she is being bullied by the usual suspects? Being stoned the public? Why are we standing here quietly while members of the Cabinet are being stoned and bullied? But why are we sitting here? She's being bullied. Nobody, listen, y'all be quiet. That's fine. I'm not going to be quiet. You're not going to just bully my superintendent that I know I put in office. The fact that we know Justin Spire, we've been giving him money since 2016, we done passed resolutions before I was on the Board. Some of you sitting here were on the Board and passing resolutions to give Justin Spire money for years now. Okay? So, it's not like we didn't know who Justin Spire was, and not like legal didn't vet Dr. B.C. or her son to make sure they do not own Justin Spire, because we did back in May, when I was still on the Board. So, we do know that. It's like it's cool to be, it's a mystery, but it's really not a mystery. Okay? So, listen, in all actuality, partnering and resolving, any member on the Board, if you're an educator or an ex-educator, you know the importance of students getting their IEP mandated services. A gentleman came up and just pitched this, what his business does, he understands too. We cannot sit back and act like we're going to forever sit and keep talking about, oh, Tuesday, get me services. And the only time we talk about this is around spring, why, because the flowers is up? No. It's because at that time, it seems to be clever to mention it at that timeframe when the year began in spring. But why is nobody getting nothing done about it? Why is no Board member said anything about actually press? I want to see a presentation to the public about where we stand with compensatory services from all the kids that didn't get their services from COVID. When we went home, we should be able to have a presentation to the public and something that goes on the district site that shows all of that. There's no reason for this, normally. We can't sit here and continue talking about it and acting like we're doing something when we know nobody's pressing nothing. And all we doing is making sure whoever's hired and fired got to be friends with a Board member to keep their job or get a job.
Mr. Mitchell, your time is expired.
Yeah, I believe that.
Thank you for your comments.
And also, we also need to pay attention to the fact that this might get here, but I'm still talking to this.
We appreciate all your comments, Mr. Mitchell.
We can't even afford to keep Facebook going live. We not live right now, because of where the money is being spent, because we don't have enough to cover it. No repairs and repairs in this district is going to happen because of where the budget is. Can't keep talking about money that supposedly disappeared five or 12 years ago, when certain members of this Board was on this Board, and still talking about how that money that was missing since five, six years ago is now affecting the fact that we don't have repairs on the South Side buildings. I don't want to hear that.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Can we have security escort Mr. Mitchell? Can we have security escort Mr. Mitchell off the stage, please?
If you haven't been to your buildings, please go visit your buildings.
Can we get security to escort Mr. Mitchell out of here? Thank you for your time. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mitchell.
I have a question. Mr. Mitchell, hi. Hi, I have a question.
Sure.
You said you served on the Board. When, while you were on the Board, were those programs, were those audits were done as far as the IEP? What have you done during the three years to make sure, I'm asking a question, to make sure that those things were done that you're so passionate about now?
Let me, can I just add one thing, Ms. Kerwin, also? When I asked for an audit for five or six years ago, when Mr. Mitchell was on the Board, he stood in the way of getting one.
I wasn't on the Board for five, six years.
So, you were on the Board for three years, and you stood in the way. He was on the Board for three years, and you stood in the way of audit. So, you can go ahead and answer Ms. Kerwin's question if you want to.
I'll answer your question. First of all, the reason I didn't chase that audit is because I didn't chair that committee, because I wasn't knowledgeable at the time.
What made you?
And I believe that the President Saunders, who did chair that committee for the past, I think, five, six years now, she didn't, I felt that she had it under control. There was another prior trustee who also seemed to have that under control. So, all I really wanted to see was the committee reports to see where we stood. Now, if anybody knows me, and most people who know me, I don't stand in the way of anything. So, if anything, you tell me. And I stood up there, sat in that seat, and when trustee Saunders had said, I want to disorder that audit, I sat there and I backed her and said, yes, can we please, why don't we have it yet? There's questions, you can re, look at the previous meetings. I backed her, supported her request, because yes, we should get audits, we should have reports from the Cabinet and give the trustees, but then even the timely, you shouldn't have to wait until you have to go get a haircut or color your hair again before you get answers from the committee and the Cabinet with things that you want to know.
Thank you.
Okay? Does that answer the question?
Somewhat, it does, somewhat. I was just curious as to why you didn't push through for these audits and for the IEP services while you were on the Board, regardless if you were chairing the committees.
That was the main reason. I wasn't knowledgeable. I really wasn't.
I understand.
And I really felt, I had great faith in my fellow Board members, especially the ones that have been with for so long, I really felt that they knew what they were doing. And I don't believe in saying something that I don't have answers and facts for. That's why I'm right now, I'm not making accusations or anything, I'm just saying, we never got it, I'm making a request that anybody can request it now, because I didn't know. I really didn't.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Evelyn Torres?
Hi, everybody. I'm coming here in the middle because I need everyone's attention. My son, Juan Carlos Torres, seven years old, excuse me, I'm not supposed to mention any names. Seven years old, went missing from Rebecca Turner Elementary School last Monday, and no one knew. On Monday, November 14th, 2022, at 8:28 a.m. while I was at work.
Ms. Torres, can you face the Board? You can stand out there, we can hear you, but you need to face the Board.
Well, I'm facing the Board, and no one's facing me. Only you guys.
If you stand there, everybody can hear you.
Guys, stand there.
Thank you.
On Monday, where's the camera? Hi, everybody. On Monday, November 14th, at 11:28 a.m. while I was at work, I received a notification on my phone from my driveway on my Ring camera. The video showed my seven-year-old son scooting by a garbage bag in my driveway. I immediately called my eldest daughter, who was still at home at the time, and asked her if her brother was home. She responded, no. I quickly went to see the live view on my camera and confirmed that, in fact, my son was still crouched down in the driveway. She quickly called out for him to come inside the house. He hid for a few and then responded to her call. Time is, I sprinkled my statement with time, because when a child goes missing, time is very important. I quickly texted, he hid for a few seconds and then responded to her call. I called out of my job at 11:36 a.m. I work at 100 East First Street, and I live on 59 Wildwood Avenue. I quickly texted his teacher on the Remind app and sent her a screenshot of my son in the driveway and acted she was aware that my child was not in the classroom. At 11:40 a.m., I called the school guidance counselor directly and informed her that my son was not in school but at home. She stated that she would let the principal know and that I should expect a call. I had to walk home because I was not able to get a car ride on time. I called the Mount Vernon Police Department at 11:43 a.m. and requested that an officer be dispatched, because a seven-year-old had walked out of Rebecca Turner Elementary School, and as of the time that I received a notification on my phone, which was 11:28 a.m., I still had not received a call from the school advising me that my child was missing. No one at the school was aware that my child was missing. I notified them. The school principal called me at 11:57 a.m. She apologized and informed me that the guidance counselor, ma'am, had alerted her that my son was not in the school. She stated that her and the assistant principal ran to the lunchroom to confirm that he was, in fact, not there. My son's teacher responded to my text that my son had left to go to the bathroom at 10:45 a.m. I reached my home a little after 12:00 and was greeted by office, by a Mount Vernon Police Department officer. He informed me that he had checked the driveway and the surrounding premises and did not see my son. I told him that my son had gone inside. He asked my son why he left the school, how he left the school, and my son answered his questions. Another officer came in shortly and asked more follow-up questions, my daughter and I provided her RIDs, and she personally called the teacher, my son's teacher, on her cellphone, because her son used to be a classmate of the teacher. She asked me at what time did I see my son. I reviewed my Ring camera again, and this time I saw that the Ring camera picked up my son at 10:52 15 a.m. When I saw this, my stomach dropped. I did not receive the notification until 11:28, and immediately reacted. My seven-year-old son was missing from the school since before 10:52 a.m., and no one knew he was gone. He was not in the school premises. I dropped him off at school in the morning at 8:25 and went to work like I always do. I asked the officers to resend my son to Rebecca Turner, and one of the officers escorted him. My daughter and I followed. When we reached the school, we were greeted by the principal, the assistant principal, my son's teacher. The principal did apologize, but then, after that, the focus became on why my son left and the strategies he used. No one discussed the negligence. A seven-year-old boy, under four feet tall, in the school, ran across the field, crossed two streets, and ran home unattended. They lost track of a seven-year-old kid. The teacher explained that he left to go to the bathroom at 10:45 a.m. When he did not return, she thought that he went to the nurse because his eyes itched, and he wants to get a cold cough. And nothing after that. No one in that school was aware that my child was not there until I notified them. He was alone in the street for almost an hour from 10:45 a.m. When the teacher stated he left until about, he left until about 11:28, when I saw him in the driveway, and no one knew until I called and made them aware that he was not in the building, this is not an issue to be ignored, and this is not acceptable. My child had his reasons to leave the school, and that is something that my family is exploring. He was spoken to on the dangers of being alone, and he was punished. He did try to leave again on Tuesday, November 15th, and this time he was stopped. He was stopped because the principal stated that he would be walked to the bathroom with a buddy for the remainder of the week. As of today, the doors still don't have an alarm or a camera. How about if another kid comes and copies my child? What happens if my child tries again next week or the following week? How do I know that my child is safe in school? This incident could have gone another way. Honestly, I am grateful that I am standing here today, talking to you guys, and that I wrote this letter, instead of standing in front of City Hall with all of you with candles and blue balloons consoling me. and blue balloons consoling me. That's disgusting. My child went missing. He could have gotten hit by a car. He could have gotten taken by a med patient. What measures? I need to know what measures is the board going to take to make sure that my kid and every other kid in the school is safe and that a recurrence like this does not happen? We need to know. As parents, we need to know, and it's not fair. Also, I wrote this email and I sent it to various people, and no one responded to me until today. The principal didn't call me back. The urgency of this was not indicated, and honestly, that's why I'm standing here. Because if anybody had called me last week and told me, "Listen, we're going to review what happened. We're going to talk to certain people. We're going to make sure that this doesn't happen again," I wouldn't be standing here today. It's not fair. I don't want this to happen again, and I'm angry. Now I'm angry. I was puzzled and upset last week, but I'm angry. Is there anything else anybody wants to add?
Ms. Torres, I feel your passion, and this is the first time we're hearing about this right now. So, I think Dr. Hamilton, Dr. B.C., you should answer that question.
Yes. Well, as I spoke to you today, and we had a very nice conversation, I will definitely be looking into the matter. As of tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the principal to discuss the different procedures and what took place. I also have Dr. Kim Smith, who was Assistant Superintendent of PPS, is looking at it too. And I definitely will give you all the different things that we put into place. Not that we know our procedures into place, but were they followed?
They weren't.
Right. So, as I spoke to you today, we are definitely going to have those conversations tomorrow and follow through on it, and I will definitely let you know where we are. But I, first of all, I must apologize for that happening to you and that nobody didn't get back in time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as possible.
I'm so sorry.
But as soon as I was told, though, I called you today, and we have that conversation, and I even said to you, "You could come and speak at the board." That's not a problem. The problem is, once I know a situation, I'm going to deal with it because safety is a priority for me, and that's the first thing I said to you today. But we will continue this conversation.
Thank you.
So, what's the corrective action that we're gonna do for the future?
Well, the corrective action is gonna be a group of us are gonna have to come together to decide what the situation is because there are two sides to a story. I have to hear from her, the principal, what took place so that we can put the proper intervention into place.
Dr. Ben Conroy, respectfully, there are two sides to the story, but the point is, it's just that my kid left.
That's right.
How, how did that happen?
Most importantly.
And, you know...
Yes.
You know, as to, like, last week, I was in such a daze that immediately when we got to the school, they blamed it on him. And I was just like, okay, you know, it just happened. He needs to be punished, so I kind of went with the flow. But then as time goes on, and I'm talking to people, they're like, okay, what? Okay, well, what did I do? It was their fault, and I'm just like, you're right. And not only that, the police officer that wrote the report, she wrote this report as if she was writing about some high school student that left. She indicated that the kid left without permission. A seven-year-old doesn't need permission. He should not have been able to leave the school.
And you are correct.
But I have to hear the other side of the story.
No, I know that. Of course, you will. And at the end of the day, he shouldn't have been gone.
Right.
Somebody could have told me, if he was missing, five minutes later, how do you miss a kid? Really, he could have had a seizure, a heart attack, I don't know.
And I totally agree with you with that.
No, I know, you did, and I appreciate that, but now I'm speaking to the board.
You have to put stairway, because that's my school. Put stairway?
Excuse me?
Do you know what door he went out of?
He went through the first door, I think, where the kindergarten is getting out. You know where the tree is? On that door, and then it has little steps. Mr. Dogg, what door is that?
I know what that is. It says it's the pre-K, is it in front of the building?
On the side, in front of the tree.
I think it's the side where the steps are.
Yes.
With their egregious misses.
Okay.
I'm sorry, how long you said the principal took before they reach out to you?
She called me at, because I have it on my cell phone, that's why I was able to indicate the time. At eleven fifty-seven AM. I left my job at eleven twenty-eight, and I called the guidance counselor at eleven forty. But the principal said that her and the assistant principal went to look for my son in the lunchroom.
So, tomorrow, the first thing we're gonna do, we have to increase security in that building. That's point number one. You know, but there are other things that I have to look into to make sure that everything is addressed properly in terms of...
Dr. Conroy, that school has, it has kids with special needs. There are autistic kids in there. I mean, my son is regular. He's a regular student, but he's very smart. And I get it because some people, just because of the way he talks or the way he acts, they'll trust him in anything, right? He's very charming as well. But that doesn't exclude the fact that you let, that's a big discrepancy. I should not have had to call the school and tell them, "He's not there." Really, isn't he? No, he's not.
I agree with you on that. I agree with you on that. Talk to them with you on that. So, let me set to work tomorrow.
Thank you. How are you gonna follow up with me and what?
Well, I'm gonna follow up with you tomorrow after the meeting, and if I have to pull you into the meeting, then I do that too.
Definitely, I don't work too far.
Can we follow up with the board also? Yeah, you need to let the board know what actions you're taking. I know you said you were gonna get more security, but can there be doorbells or alarms at the doors? Can we put some kind of...
That will take time right now, right now.
I have to meet with a group of folks.
That's something we could do because, like you said, there's a lot of bad kids in the building.
I'm sorry, I'm more fancy. I'm on the Security Committee, Safety and Security Committee. So, I do know, during the process of rewiring most of the schools for cameras and all the things that could prevent this in the future, security-wise, I can't account for teachers or principals. Security-wise, they are doing that, and I think you even just authorized more security guards this week already. So, I don't, I didn't know it has anything to do with this. I'm not saying it does. I'm saying, I know, I saw in an email to me that they are moving some money in order to get more guards into the school district.
Well, they need to apply, especially in elementary school, they're gonna do it. They're little kids. I came from District Three in the Upper West Side, and I moved my family here because Mount Vernon is in the middle of everything, and I like it, it's a small community. I came from District Three here. I dedicate my life here. I work in the community, and I'm a service worker at that. If I take care of the community, I want the community to take care of my kids.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Every expectation for that.
And we will.
You said, "On my end, I will certainly follow up with this," and, I mean, that's why they have increased the manpower, manpower on the security side in all the schools to accommodate for the situation in the world and the fact that, you know, there are situations where physical security is lacking, so they brought in more manpower in order to keep track of it. In this case, unfortunately, your son did slip right through it, and he's obviously a very intelligent kid, as you point out, because he makes his way out and actually made his way home. I'm impressed with that. But as you point out, that might not have been the result here, and we might have been in entirely different place right now, so...
Mr. Leno, it needs to get expedited.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Blake?
Hi, my name is Ben Bakie. I'm the PTA President at Rebecca Turner, and I mostly came to just support Ms. Torres, and, I mean, obviously, she did a very good job to advocate for herself. But I did want to reiterate about safety and security, and she mentioned it as well, but RTES is an autism cohort school, and my daughter's autistic, and one of the things her and a lot of those kids like to do is run away. Like, it's a very common symptom, I guess, or action that autistic people do. So, if you guys can put that school on like the top of the list, because it's, she's ran away a few times. Her teachers have always been able to catch her. She's in a, you know, there's assistant teacher for teachers, but, I don't know, it's, reading her, reading her letter was like terrifying to me, and it's just something I think you guys should, it has to be a priority at this school throughout the district, so, thank you.
Thank you. That ends our public comment. Thank you. All right. So, reports from the superintendent.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you can hear me because we don't have any, any sound.
It works.
You want this right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is Facebook live?
Yes.
Okay. So, as we approach the Thanksgiving season, I would like each and every one of you to give thanks for small mercies because they do exist. So, tonight, as we give thanks for small mercies, there are a couple of things that I would like to thank the community for, as well as the principals and staff and students, our coaches, and our CSCA workers, all of those. I give thanks for the amount of work that you have put in to make sure that the school district runs successfully. So, I want to say that. And please, when you get some time, just do some form of reflection, reflection on what you as an individual can do for the, for the district better. Just reflect on that because it is very important. And please, if you get a chance, go into Ephesians, Ephesians four, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, and please read those, those verses because it is very important that you are, you should be respected by what comes out of your mouth, and you should always be, at all times, be respectful to others. So, with that, I want to thank the community and thank everyone and wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving. With that being said, I have a presentation tonight by Mr. from Savin, Kevin, and many people have been asking questions about the bond, the status of the bond, and I know some questions have been asked because you don't know the status of the bond. So, tonight, I'm going to ask Mr. Savin to present on that bond, where we are. Take it away, Mr. Kevin.
Would you like me to use a microphone on the stage?
Trustee, yeah. You might, probably.
Yeah, sure. All right.
Can I get this?
Takes out?
Is that over there? Yep, this is good. Okay, there we go. And if we could bring the PowerPoint up?
And you have a little John Carson? Did you put the...
I did, yeah. Good to go.
Oh, there we go. Okay, awesome. Okay, well, thank everyone for having me this evening. This will be somewhat of a brief review of the bond. In 2015, the board, as well as the district, set out to determine how to fix the schools. Why is that? Because we realized that in 2015, there was $170 million worth of repairs that were needed in the district, 170 million. So, what were some of those repairs? If you take a look at the screen, you'll see some of the before pictures. As you can see from Graham, that used to be just the face of it with no entrance, correct? Moving forward, looking at Columbus Auditorium, the conditions, Williams Auditorium, some 50, 60, 70 years since the last renovation on the auditorium. Columbus School, we see the condition of the classroom. Holmes, similar. So, again, this is painting the picture for the trustees that are new because perhaps many have not had a chance to visit the schools either recently or definitely not in 2015 when these conditions were noted by the architect, Phil Indangelo. But this gives us a nice playback of history, right? That's very important. If we look at Lincoln, the open floor plan with the accordion doors, of course, very difficult for learning, as well as the carpet. Parker, again, Thornton was some hundred years, close to 100 years with regard to the auditorium, built in 1932. Various leaks on Thornton, and this is one of my favorites, the, the high school fields, but if you look at the bleachers there on the right, not exactly ready for game day. Mandela, of course, very deplorable conditions, even being closed for a number of years, at least a portion of it. You can see the situation that existed there. We just stepped through some of these. This was due to leak in the academy, but once 2015 hit, the decision was made, determination by the community and the board, to move forward with addressing the issues. What are some of them? So, look what Graham went to, from basically dirt in the ground. And this is time-lapse video showing the basketball court, the fields, the courtyard, parking. What a drastic difference in a year and a half. We take a look at the Graham entrance. Notice now that entire face is completely different. That included the overall renovation to implement pre-K to eight, new fields, new main entrance and site improvement. Hopefully, other buildings will be able to benefit from the example that's here. Upgrades with the emergency lighting, fire alarm, IT upgrades, as well as the playground. Main lobby, the science. The Columbus Auditorium, drastic difference from where it was, if you remember from that picture. Williams as well. Again, diligent effort put forth through public bids to have contractors fulfill their obligation as designed by the architects to complete the renovation of the spaces that were assigned. Just stepping through some more of them. Then we went to the five schools in order to move them to pre-K to eight. Many of them were just pre-K to six, so, or did not have an eighth grade. So, in order to accomplish that, the science classrooms were put in. This is Lincoln, the science lecture. Holmes, pre-K. Thornton had serious renovations throughout the building, building-wide interior renovations, especially the auditorium, as well as a new stair tower, gym storage, and outside work. This was pretty impressive to take something that was built in 1932 to make it into what it is today. Also, it added a new dance studio, experimental theater, Pennington, interior renovations as well as an addition. And so, here's another hole in the ground to now the 12-classroom addition. Again, the beauty of time-lapse video, hard to appreciate what was done over the course of two years, but as was shown in that video, real quick, it demonstrates all the additional things that were accomplished with the $108 million. Mount Vernon STEAM, this was critical to the 2020 vision for the High Schools of Excellence, including the new spaces for engineering labs, makerspace, shops, science, art, robotics. So, renovation, most people think of, well, it just needs to be renovated, but the reality is, if you do not upgrade the building to what you want it to be, then you're gonna pay for it twice. Because if you built, if you renovated the building and put it back to the way it was when it was built 50, 60, 100 years ago, that's all you're gonna have. And then you're gonna pay another amount considerably more in order to enhance it, basically undoing the work that you already did. So, wherever there was work accomplished or done, the focus was on not just putting it back to the way it was, but to meet the goals that the board had as well as the community. And there we go. All right, a brand-new roof on the STEAM Academy. You can imagine how large a project that was, a huge building, as well as exterior work. And then we go to the high school. Again, we saw the difficulties with having adequate space and locations for the talent that's in Mount Vernon, but yet this was drawn up by the architect as well as implemented. We have the new tennis courts, eight-lane track, new football field, and it was done in two phases, the move to the baseball field, softball, soccer, and the running path. Trappagin Science. Uh, there were modulators, for those who were not aware of it, in order to have swing space, uh, for, uh, Mandela. Uh, considerable IT improvements, uh, that were done, that were focused on the buildings that were getting the upgrades, which were, uh, Graham, Pennington, and Thornton, as well as Mandela and the Steams Academy. Uh, Mandela renovation. And you can imagine, uh, what that was like. Uh, this is an example of what the renovation was like throughout the entire building. So basically, um, you got the building, it was actually, uh, acknowledged by SED as a gut renovation, so that's the reason why it costs so much, because you have a hundred-year-old building and the conditions were, uh, not the best, to say the least. As you can see, they ripped off the entire roof. And this is, uh, probably key, uh, this is any renovation that will, that took place in the past, as well as what you have to plan for in the future. Uh, these are discovered conditions in Mandela, meaning you could have the best architect in the world, whoever built, uh, Freedom Tower and anything else. When you actually, uh, estimate how much it's going to cost to renovate something without tearing it down completely, you are not aware of all of the, um, uh, concealed locations that may be a problem. So in this case, on the left, you see that used to be a steel beam, but look at what it what it is now, or what it was, uh, once they opened it up, uh, as well as the roof, uh, support structures, they just were not there, uh, around the windows, uh, serious leaks. So these are all the things that were not known until you actually opened the building up completely during renovation. And, uh, Grimes, uh, moved from being, uh, the demo, uh, move it, moving over to just electrical code upgrades due to, uh, funding. All right, so the fun part, the financials. So, um, all of you are educators, or we're part of a district, uh, that educates, uh, you have teachers, you have others, and sometimes, just because someone has a label of a teacher does not mean that they know math, that they know science, that they know trigonometry, whatever it is, they have a specialty, they have some general, but they can answer every question. Well, in most cases, most cannot appreciate or understand the cost of construction. As an example, uh, how many would appreciate or know that in May two thousand and twenty, the cost of a seventh-grade classroom, and this is right off the SED website, as well as the Department of Labor, it cost eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for a single classroom. So right there, you might think, oh, well, I've painted my house before, I've painted some rooms, I've renovated a few items, but the reality is, a school building is not a school building, it's an apartment complex. In this case, you take Mount Vernon High School, that's a hundred, basically, units in that building, so it's in the, it's a complex, it's not a buil- building. So when you look at it from that perspective, you can appreciate, one, it costs a lot. So, uh, that is one thing that I think was a wake-up call for most, uh, people when we did this, uh, but actually now, look at August two thousand and twenty-two, according to the state, a thirty percent increase, it's now cost one point two million, which means if you had decided two years ago to try to figure out what it was going to cost to do something, you were going to be off by thirty percent potentially, even with the best estimate. Why? Because of inflation. We all know about food, the price of, uh, cars, everything is going up. So in this case, if you were to plan something for the future, these are the numbers to actually go with, because this is off the Department of Labor and the SED website, one point two million per seven hundred and seventy-square-foot classroom. That is not a high school science room, that is not art, that's not dance, that is strictly a seven hundred and seventy-foot square, uh, uh, classroom for seventh grade. The wonderful thing, though, is, is that that's also the amount of money that the state will provide you. So that's the reason why it's okay for it to be, uh, high in this instance, because the maximum cost allowance is determined by the state. So regardless of what you plan on doing in the future, you have to go based on what the state is going to aid, so that you can get that money back. So that's, uh, the cost. Taking a step back, with that in mind, one classroom, one point two million dollars. In two thousand and fifteen, the architect said that there was a hundred and seventy million dollars in repairs, so that's the number to go with, a hundred and seventy So now, that hundred and seventy million is broken down, as listed here, from Mandela all the way through the Ed Center. Uh, you can see, uh, the most, uh, being the Mount Vernon High School, uh, having, uh, thirty-five million dollars in needed repairs. But also look at the column called age, uh, most of the buildings are over fifty years, so you can imagine using those buildings, uh, some two hundred and fifty days a year, or thereabouts, depending upon summer school, and you have traffic in basically your front room, every single day, except for the weekends, how you could not have problems as far as the need for additional cost to repair, uh, knowing, uh, children are good, but, uh, uh, there can be times where just wear and tear will cost you. So what was the decision that was made in two thousand and sixteen? Uh, the board unanimously decided, as well as the view, the community voted, that only thirty percent of the seventy million will be included in the two thousand and twenty bond. So that means, or equates to forty-nine million of the hundred and seventy, was going to be in the repairs. Why is that important to know? Because there's only so much you can borrow. So the debt service limits, limit how much you can borrow, so even if you had a hundred and seventy million in repairs, before any academic improvements, you still have the issue of, you could only borrow so much, right? Your credit card has a limit. Uh, also, the academic needs for the high schools of excellence, as well as, uh, creating the pre-K to eight community schools, uh, were needed. So now that leaves us with the two thousand and sixteen, uh, repairs, uh, comparison. Uh, so in two thousand and sixteen, that means a hundred and twenty million dollars in repairs were postponed. Uh, so the, there you see the hundred and seventy by school, and then the board and the community agreed with the column in yellow for forty-nine million dollars, and that shows you the percentage. Not a single building, uh, would receive the full funding that was needed for the repairs, uh, because of, again, the priorities. So what was the final vote? In March two thousand and sixteen, when the community voted, there's a hundred and eight million dollars, those are the three allocations. The bond, uh, renovations, or the, um, repairs, forty-nine million, and then in order to convert to pre-K to eight, uh, with the science, pre-K, as well as the science upgrades, and district-wide IT, was fifty million. So basically, the board made a decision, fifty-fifty, for the most part, repairs, and then convert the schools so that they are adequate enough to teach in the twenty-first century, not to rebuild it back to nineteen fifty or nineteen sixty. Uh, so that was going to cost you fifty million dollars. Uh, the fields, uh, in order to keep talent, attract those who are so athletic within the district, uh, um, uh, funds were set aside or put in the bond for some eight point seven million for the fields, for a total of a hundred and eight million. Fast forward one year, what happened? The repurposed bond, and I think I skipped one, one second. I'll go back. Okay, on the repurposed bond, this is the actual, in two thousand and twenty, in two thousand and seventeen, the decision was made by the board, as well as the community, to add space for, uh, Mandela. So that twenty-two million dollars was previously zero, it went to twenty-two million. Where did the twenty-two million come from? It came from the other schools that had, uh, infrastructure requirements. Uh, Pennington was also increased from eight classrooms to twelve, and, uh, Thornton campus, due to abatement requirements, was increased, as well as, um, uh, Graham on the renovation. So basically, your six projects cost ninety million dollars. So to put that in context, again, remember, how much is one classroom? Right? Nearly a million dollars for renovation, uh, thorough renovation. Well, you've got six buildings that had major upgrades for some ninety million dollars. A second perspective is, um, Yonkers, uh, currently is, uh, finalizing, uh, their new school thirty-five, uh, community school thirty-five. One, one building, four floors, ninety thousand square feet, a quarter of Mount Vernon High School, eighty million dollars. One school, eighty million dollars. So that's the reality, is that being able to renovate the schools versus trying to build new, really did have a positive impact on the district. Because if you did not have Mandela to add capacity, uh, the additional, uh, rooms at Pennington, as well as converting the, uh, high schools of excellence, uh, you would not have nearly what you have as far as the academics, uh, options for students in the community. Part two, uh, part two, uh, this is where the infrastructure was postponed. So again, two thousand and seventeen, the decision was made, in order to align those six priorities, then these schools, uh, basically had their infrastructure postponed. It was discussed, uh, in one of the board meetings, and or numerous board meetings, that potentially, it could be made up in multiple ways. One, Senator Pretlow actually, um, helped craft a bill specifically for Mount Vernon, in addition to Yonkers having the same thing, to double the MCA, or the maximum cost allowance. So that is the only way that Yonkers is building that building, because they got twice the maximum cost allowance, and the same was put forth for, um, for Mount Vernon. However, in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, it did not pass the Senate. So when they were voting on it, it did not go through, the governor didn't sign it, it never made it to his desk. So on subsequent years, I think through, uh, Ken Silver and, uh, others in the administration, uh, made a petition to continue to ask for that as well. So it's not a dead issue as of yet, but at least you kind of know that there was the potential of having more, if that would have passed the legislation. Some may ask the question, what about all the change orders? Why is it that, uh, contractors receive so much extra than what the original bid was? Well, again, we're, we're educators, right? So from a construction standpoint, or any homeowner here would know, an industry standard for renovation is ten percent, meaning whatever you estimate it to be, add another ten percent to it. Reason being is, again, uh, items, uh, can be, um, uh, uh, not seen, like abatement and other items, especially like in Thornton, but look at the reality of what took place on this, uh, hundred and eight million dollar project. Um, uh, number A, you see, all of those had zero, you got money back on those four projects. Uh, the next six projects, there were no change orders. Going to C, uh, you had thirteen projects that were, that were between two percent and eight percent in change orders. So even though the buildings are as old as they are, it was still maintained and managed thoroughly to ensure that the contractors were not taking advantage, uh, of the situation. And then you had four projects that were above the eight percent, but it makes sense. Uh, the, uh, low, the low one, uh, eight point six, Mandela, uh, the fields, uh, were high because of the adjustments, uh, the Graham site, and then the only building that was above the average was Thornton, um, uh, was Thornton. And again, the majority of that was because of abatement that was discovered, as they lifted the floors up, if they went into the walls, it was like, okay, no dance studio here, while you have asbestos on the floor. So asbestos removal is very expensive. And now let's go to, um, I got it, yep. Uh, the next one will show you, uh, this is just going to be two clips that kind of summarizes exactly what was decided by the district and by the board, uh, that kind of helps to put in context what actually took place, as well as kind of what the future holds. Um, and we can go to the next one?
The other thing, uh, during these bond presentations also, uh, that, uh, I've been, well, the one, at least the ones I've been present at, and I just want to make everyone And I believe I mentioned it here as well during one meeting. I can't remember all the things that I've mentioned during all the meetings anymore, uh, so many of them. Uh, but we have a very aggressive plan for this, uh, for this bond, uh, and the reality is, to do all the things that we need to do in this district is going to cost well over a hundred million dollars. So the hundred million dollars is the deposit on all the stuff that we want to do in terms of restructuring the schools, and bringing the pre-K through eight, the facilities upgrades, the academic vision, but it certainly will not cover everything. Now, we've listed everything that we'd like to cover, uh, but I will say it again, that, uh, my goal is to make sure that each project is a quality project that will outlive us, and not try to fit all the projects under the hundred and eight million, but meanwhile, the projects are shoddy, they will not last ten years. Uh, so whatever project that is left on the tail end that we need to continue, we will continue it through, you know, budgetary processes, or at some point, maybe even a secondary bond. Uh, so I just want to let that out there, let it be known, let it be said, let it be memorialized and recorded, uh, because I don't want people to come out and say, oh, well, you promised we'd get everything within this hundred million. Uh, we don't know the prices of everything yet. Right now, as we have this vision, we're putting it together constantly, every time a project gets drawn out by the architects, that have hundreds of pages of documents, those documents go out to bid, and then we get a, uh, well, first they go to estimation, and then they go out to bid, and we have a closer idea of what that costs. And as those, of course, we have priority projects, and the priority projects being what it's going to take to get that pre-K configuration, pre-K through eight configuration, so that we can have our three high schools of excellence and structure those, and then we move forward. Uh, then, uh, the forward motion also, uh, is going to require, uh, science classrooms in all of the other elementary schools, uh, and, uh, room for pre-K and, uh, seventh and eighth graders, uh, two, uh, segments each. So that's the vision. Ford, I just want to remind everyone here, including the committee, that this community has been, uh, burdened with very high taxes as compared to their property values, the highest in Westchester County. Uh, so, uh, you know, part of, you know, what most of us ran on was to ease that burden on the community, and I, for sure, intend to help keep that commitment. I understand your concern, uh, trustee McDowell, regarding, uh, every year that we don't, uh, increase the taxes, we could, we have less, uh, that two percent equates to less of an amount that we could levy the next year, off the total, uh, which is, okay. Uh, again, uh, when we need the money, we'll ask the community for the money. Uh, but right now, uh, we have a series of projects that, you know, maybe it takes a little bit longer to implement, uh, but that's okay, because we have to give families in this town a breather.
And basically, and basically, that's a hundred and eight million dollars, summarized by the board president at the time, also facilities chair, uh, for the facilities committee, to help us to appreciate where we came, why certain things were selected, and to realize that there's a lot ahead. So just as a hundred and seventy million was not cared for under the previous bond, again, your last, um, uh, building condition survey demonstrated that you have significant repairs that are still needed, as shown in this presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We have another presentation, and that is going to be done by, um, Mr. Pierce. Could you please come up here? Christopher Pierce, principal of Benjamin Turner. And this is about a program that we are having in, um, Benjamin Turner, along with a partnership with Iona College. I know, um, trustee Corwin, you probably want to step forward and, and kind of talk about the, this program to everyone.
Okay. It's okay, that's okay. Can you hear me? Yes. No. Could you hear me now? Okay. Good evening, good evening, again. Um, this Iona program, I am so elated that, um, we were able to partner with Iona. Um, I have to tell you a, a little short story, that, um, when, I'm a, I'm affiliated with Iona, um, university. My daughter has been in this program since she was in the seventh grade. And so last year, when Iona University said that they have, they want to start a pilot program in the, in the district. They wanted to start a, the pilot program in the district, they reached out to Mount Vernon, um, school district. However, it was unsuccessful. They met with a lot of bumps from Mount Vernon, not sure why. So, um, they came back, and they were doing a presentation again, and, um, I overheard they say that they are going to go into school districts again. And I raised my hand, and I said, um, I met with, um, the coordinators, um, of Iona University for this step program. And I raised my hand, and I said, um, would you consider going into Mount Vernon again? They shot me down because of the negativity that they faced when they came into Mount Vernon, um, last year. And I begged them, I said, please, give us one more try. I, I would facilitate everything in my power to get this up and running in Mount Vernon. And I presented it to the board, thank you, everyone, for, um, believing in this, and of course, I called the superintendent, and I, and I was so, I was so happy, I was like, Dr. B.C., you have to hear this program. And, um, when I presented to Dr. B.C., she told me to have them, um, send over the proposal. And so they did, they sent over the proposal, and we were able to get this up and running. And I thank you so much, thank you, the board, for working with me, and I have to say, thank you, Iona College, Iona University now, to, um, partnering with, um, the Mount Vernon School District. And Dr. Pierce, I have to say, they are so excited to be working with you. They say your, um, enthusiasm in this program is, is what they needed. And I, so I thank you so much for, um, going forward and, um, presenting this to the school and accepting this in your school. And when I spoke to Dr. B.C., Dr. B.C. was able to identify the school that she thinks will be beneficial at this time for this program. But I have to also say, Dr. B.C. and the board, But I have to also say, Dr. B.C. and the board, that I will be meeting with the coordinators again at Iona University in December, because I'm pushing for one more school to get this program for probably January or February, based on the success rate that Dr. Pierce will come out from his school. So thank you for spearheading the pilot here in Mount Vernon, and I know it will be successful. And when I go back to speak with them at the table, then we all have all success, and they will say yes again. And hopefully, next year, they could spread their net a bit wider, and they could bring it in to more schools in the district due to funding. And as I spoke to everyone about that, hopefully, next year, we could get more, they would get more funding, because it's no cost to the district, it's absolutely no cost. Iona is footing all the costs 100%. So thank you so much, Dr. Pierce, and I wish you nothing but luck with this program. Thanks, thank you, everyone.
First, I just say good evening to everyone, our president, trustees, members. We're going to skip to slide number four. Thank you, I think it's slides, but I want to circle them up. Now, actually, so we're talking about technology. So my favorite app is Google. I go on Google every single day, because I'm a researcher. I like to find things, and if I don't know things, I like to be informed. So I go to Google and search things. So I type in STEM, STEM, and then slide number four, where's slide number four? Yes, there was an article that came, there was a research study, slide number four? The one that you had before, right? There you go. So it says STEM jobs see uneven progress in increasing generational ethnic diversity. This was very disturbing. If you look at this graph, it was very disturbing. Because if you look where it says black, Hispanic, you will see that of all the STEM jobs, black is represented by 9%, Hispanic 8%, Asian 13, white 67. If you go across, you'll see health-related science, math, physical science, computer engineering, and notice, black at the top, computers 7%, Hispanic 8%, Asians 20, other 3, white 62. Engineering 5, 9, 13. Those are disturbing stats in my eyes. And this is why this program is highly important. Now, I grew up in Mount Vernon, I came to Mount Vernon in 1987. That's like many years ago. I was 15 years old when I went to Mount Vernon High School. Now, I didn't know what I wanted to be. I had an interest in the biology, but my mom's a nurse. But, you know, when you come from the island, sometimes you're tracked into certain programs. So I was in accounting, which I hated. So when I left Mount Vernon High School, I could do taxes and all of those things, but I hated it. So I decided, you know, my mom said, go to med school. I was like, no, I'm not going to med school. So I decided to become an engineer. So I went, and I got a degree in electrical engineering. What I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say is, we need more exposure, which is what I needed. Because when I went to college, I had to start off with pre-cap. Pre-cap is something that should have taken in the 12th grade. So because I wanted to do something totally different, no physics, none of those sciences, I had to start with the prerequisites. But the first thing, yeah, I work hard, it doesn't matter if I'm deficient, I'm still going to work hard to catch up, which I did. And I was able to graduate with honors in engineering. I don't know how it is, that's like God's grace, you know? But it's possible. And what I want to see with this program is exposure for our young people. They need to be exposed to the sciences. The data shows how much we're underrepresented, minorities are underrepresented in these fields. And this is from 2021. That's why it's so disturbing, it's not like 10 years ago. This is like zero, you know? So we need to expose our kids. You said once, another school. This program should be in every school in Mount Vernon. Hopefully, eventually, it will be in every single school where we have STEAM Academy. That's, you know, we're going to feed into the STEAM Academy with the STEM program, just like the arts is going to feed into those in Washington. That should be the focus, the prime focus for the district. Let's put this in every school so kids can be exposed. We need more, this went by, also with gender, females, we need more females. I'm a proponent for that, because when I did my engineering program, appearance was all females. Mostly males, and we need more females. I'm biased, but I need more black females, minority females in engineering, and not just a traditional, you know, role that we're supposed to play. I'm not for that, I have two daughters, I love that mindset. All right, so this program is very important. All right, I'm going to go to the next slide. STEM, does anybody know what STEM represents? All right, so STEM is a science, is a science, technology, engineering program. If you Google this and go to the website, New York State website, you'll see this will pop up, and it will give you all the information, which I'm not going to do today, because it's already there. You just have to be a researcher and find it. But this is a program that's across New York State. Next one, please. So when I looked at the data, this was during COVID. And if you notice, on the left side, you'll see some bars. This program starts in the seventh grade. There were 53 programs in New York State with about 10,000 plus students enrolled. And the program started in the seventh all the way to 12. And if you notice, as the students went higher, notice the amount of, the increase in the number of students enrolled in this program. Next slide, please. What I like about this next slide is it says 77% of the students enrolled plan to attend college, which is wonderful. So if we start to invest in our young people from the seventh grade, not when they get to STEAM, because I was also, so the students had STEAM, so I've been around, we want to start this from when they're in the seventh grade to spark their interest. And on the other side, 57%, once they were enrolled, got into a STEM field. This, going into engineering, computer science, and all these things, it's courage. But if you kind of give the students an appetite from when they're in seventh, eighth, by the time they get to 12th grade, and one of the dilemmas, I'm going to tell you this, for 12th graders, is what am I going to do with my life? When they get to 12th grade, and so some people spend six years in a four-year institution in college, because they still cannot figure out what they want to do, because they have not been exposed to what they want to do. So the earlier we start, I believe, the better it will be. So I'm so happy for Iona University. Listen, Benjamin Turner is a community school, and part of the community school initiative is expanded learning. We're focusing on the expanded learning piece. Eventually, our school is going to run from seven to seven. I do want to expose our students to as many interests, robotics, engineering, artificial intelligence, which is what this program is going to reveal for us. It's going to focus on artificial intelligence. If you want to the next slide, please. All right, we're going to move past that one. Okay, next one. Okay, next one, thank you. We're going to go through this very quickly, next one. All right, so, other one, and then this. All right, so, I was on a presentation with this lady on the left side. I mean, I was fascinated, because when I looked at the profile of these people, I mean, these people are all PhDs in computer science, and I was happy to be in their presence, and from Berkeley, Northeastern, Harvard. And they're going to be instructor. This is an online program, they would be the one, they decide, now, if you look at their profile, 200 patents, I mean, 100 research publications over 50 years in computer industry. And these are the guys who are going to be the instructor. I mean, that got me excited. Like, I want to be a part of the program. Like, I'm going to have to stay after school with the kids and learn to build AI myself. So I'm excited about it. These kind of things stimulate me, it's not just math, science, social studies. No, they need more hands-on experiences so they can be fully engaged. And right now, our kids are very excited about this, and that's why we want to push this as much as we can, next one, please. All right, so basically, it's a hands-on, I remember the lady said, in the first 30 minutes, they are going to build their own AI. I was like, what? In the first 30 minutes? Yes, they're going to build it in 30 minutes, in the first session. So I'm excited to see how that's going to work. And then eventually, they'll have a program, project, that they're going to all present, so on. In a nutshell, because I don't need to prolong this, this, I believe, is a very important program for our students. Remember, it's geared towards students who are underrepresented, minorities. And if you look at the job field, realize that minorities are, you know, we're not up there. And so we need to come up, be, like, have a growth mindset and think about how are we going to help boost and give our scholars, because they're all scholars, I don't care what disability they have, they're still scholars, all scholars in Mount Vernon. And we're going to give them the opportunity to succeed in the 21st century. Most of us are analog learners, these are digital learners. So we need to make that conversion and give them the opportunity to be engaged in all of these things. We have to reimagine, that's one of the superintendent's points, reimagine. We need to reimagine education in Mount Vernon for 21st century learners so that they can do things, there's no need for textbooks. They have all this stuff on the iPad. They can just have all these things and be modern. And we need to modernize, I believe, education in Mount Vernon, and it's possible. All it takes is vision, I want to thank Dr. B.C. for the vision that you have to reimagine what's happening. We're excited, I believe all the principals are excited. And as I said to close, I would love to see this program in all schools in Mount Vernon. And I'm so happy that we're the first one. Whatever comes at Benjamin Turner's way, I am going to seize it, because I'm going to make my scholars the best. And that's just why I am very competitive. So I'm going to, you know, give my students a chance. But I want to spread the word, because I believe sharing is key. So with that said, I want to thank you for your time, and hope to give you good news about implementation.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pierce, for the presentation. And thank you also for reminding me that not, I'm going to do the arts in all schools, but I'm going to do STEM in all schools. Because I know you were rubbing a thing real hard. But that was a plan of mine for a very long time, that all schools should be able to do STEM, all schools should be able to do the arts. So, and that's how we're going to take it, take the show on the road. So thank you so much, and I want to thank trustee Kerwin on working on that. She is filling my, what must I say? My dream of being a working board trustee, you know? That you don't bring problems to me all the time, but you bring programs to me for my children at some point in time. So I thank you once again, and that we're going to work together. But however, I also want to say, and I really believe that all the trustees here are going to ensure that our kids are successful. Because when we work together as a team, that's the only way we can achieve. And our kids need us.
Yes.
Okay? And we do not need to more or less, I mean... Yeah, no, no. I just want, I just want to phrase it right, I want it to come out right. And we don't, we don't have to pretend that we are doing stuff and we are not doing things. So I will welcome, as I welcome all board members to work with me, bring programs in and do things. But I also want us to stick to the truth. Because, and I also want us to hold on to faith, because faith without works means nothing. So I want to say to each and every one of you, thank you. And I'm looking forward to some more programs. We are talking about bringing up STEAM. I spoke to the parents last night about how we can make STEAM school a STEAM school. And they are coming up with a lot of ideas. So anyone that can come to me with ideas, and we are ready to work for our kids, we need to move our kids forward. They are coming to school, their attendance has been outstanding, which means they are here, so we need to teach them. And that is what I'm looking forward to. Okay, thank you. And with that being said, before I close, I need to acknowledge Ms. Yolanda Kelly. Could you please stand, Ms. Yolanda Kelly? And also Mr. Grant, please stand. They were voted on at the last board meeting. And Mr. Grant is now an assistant principal, Ms. Kelly is now a specialist supervisor, and they are our internal candidates. We want to welcome them to the fold in another journey, because I've been watching them for a long time. So I know their weak points, and I know what they can do. And this is how I play the chess game, because I put the right people where they belong. I put the right people on the right bus. So thank you so much, and if you want to say something, I know President Saunders would probably give you a chance to say something later, if you want to say something, because you want to give them a chance now to say something, because they already voted on. Yes, they already voted on. Do you want to say something, Ms. Kelly, come on?
Thank you.
You can come to the mic, you can come to the mic.
What I really want to say is, I think you had a great choice in selecting Mr. Grant as assistant principal for the ninth grade at the high school. Mr. Grant and I, and Ms. Jones worked in Second Chance, which was the after-school suspension program, worked together. And I've watched Mr. Grant, he's been steady, pretty, all along. So I just want to say how happy I am for Mr. Grant for his, for being selected as an assistant principal at Mount Vernon High School.
Mr. Grant, you want to say something quickly?
Yes, I do want to say thank you, Dr. Ben Conroy and the board for selecting me for this position at high school. And I've been here in Mount Vernon for 20 years, which I have not regretted, it's been very rewarding, 20 years. I remember receiving an offer to work in Connecticut, and I think it was God's will to bring me here at Mount Vernon. And so I worked with Renaissance, I worked with Second Chance, you know, Ms. Kelly, Dr. Jones, Dr. Smith, we worked together, Dr. B.C. And I'm so pleased to be here in Mount Vernon. And I pledge to continue to work as hard as I can with the students here and families in Mount Vernon. So again, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity.
We have another person in the audience, but she's not voted on yet, so I can't bring her up. So later on, we'll bring her up. Okay, thank you. And that conclude the superintendent's report.
So do we have any committee reports? I'm just going to put that out there instead of asking anybody. Trustee Gail, any committee reports from you?
We did have a family and community engagement meeting with Dr. Conroy, Dr. Jones. And we're going to be looking into some mentoring and some other programs for the kids in the district, working with their families to see what we can do to help. So those are things that will be, you know, on the table for us to address that would definitely be helpful to the community.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
We did have a facilities committee the other day, a meeting the other day. We more or less just went over some of the same issues that they're in the process of fixing now, like the elevator over at William School, and the emergency lights that they're working on, as well as it was also discussed, the cameras that they've been working on throughout the district to put into various schools to overcome the situation that happened last week. That was more or less it.
Well, is any updates on the auctions for the equipment at the high school?
I don't have an update as far as the auction goes, I just...
Is there a date?
I don't know if there's a date.
The auction, there was a document that needed to be signed by you before anything could be done. And so I think that's been reprinted and it's going to be given to you to sign. Just saying, board had the resolution, just saying that they could do it. There's no cost to us, they get 10% of whatever they sell it for, but it has to be signed by you before we can do anything else.
So I think I had a question about the metals. Like, there's some junk metals or metals in that room. And I think our metals, is it copper and whatever metals are, some metals are more...
I'm sorry.
No, so my question was, some metals are more valuable than that junk. So maybe that's something that we can consider.
The machinery is what we're auctioning. The other stuff will be sold to a scrap metal company when we get the machinery out of there. And yes, there's a lot of scrap metal in there. I don't believe there's any copper, but there's a lot of scrap metal that is valuable.
Okay.
There's also a lot of tools which we will be keeping and using for the studio staff perhaps, or the maintenance staff, or for the various shops. There's a lot of that.
Yeah, I think trustee Lindsay had mentioned that there was another, was it the auto department, the auto?
That's what I originally spoke to someone who was heavily involved with the vocational programs years ago. He had said that the, that as with the auto shop, especially with now that they're working with Ford, that some of the different, some of the different machines in there, they still walk down, you know, walk through, through the yard and go use to fabricate or to grind or sand things that are in the auto shop. So if that's stuff that they're using. But I think Mr. Silver had actually advised me at some point that they've gone through and asked what can be utilized within the district.
So those that we're interested, we're, are going to be able to take what they want. Those will not be brought to auction.
Okay.
I just need to add to what trustee Lindsay said about the cameras, that tomorrow, all 115 cameras will be installed in Mount Vernon High School. Because that, the deadline was the 15, but the 15 is gone. But tomorrow, they should all be installed in Mount Vernon High School. And then they're going to move on to the five other schools. So I just want to give an update on that.
Thank you. Any other committee report? No? Well, I had trustee Kelly and trustee Adesobe met with me at the special education PTA meeting on November 10th. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate everyone coming out. We did make, meet our goal of over 25 interested people. And we appointed a temporary president, temporary vice president, a treasurer, and a secretary, I believe. So the next meeting is sometime in January, I believe. And I'll give you more updates as that comes along, as far as committee reports. Did meet with Mr. Shingleford from Rockland Community College. He's the one that helped us with the Ford, he brought the Ford money in from Rockland Community. So they also had some programs that we could have some of our students articulate into. And that was the nursing, cybersecurity, and culinary. So we met, we talked with Noel Campbell, and we walked through the departments. And I think we're going to do that, they're going to match the curriculum and we can have some students do that. He also said they have a program for stage, some type of stage design or something. And that could, that could be used for our students at Denzel. So I was excited to hear about that. Other than that, that's all I have for committee reports. Any old business? Old business? So I'll follow up on old business. Mr. Ramirez, is there any updates on the missing stuff that was in the school dude? Is that school dude? Where they, we put the.
Oh, for the facilities?
Facilities?
A recovery of lives.
They came to provide, sorry, I meant with Mr. Silver. We actually assigned the access to one of the consultants that is working in facilities. And they are doing all the research. He might have some space for you. All the access was provided. So they've been working with your information.
Okay. All right, so you'll keep us updated on that?
Yes.
So Silver, you have any updates on that? So the other follow-up is for the Pioneer League. We talked about that, special ed, right? So I understand we're looking for staff for that. There was a, I think there was something in OLS and somebody asked me, asked me to, someone asked what the Pioneer League was. So can someone explain that? Yeah, I know, there was a posting, but the staff that read it didn't understand what the Pioneer League was.
It's really the special ed.
Yeah, yeah.
It's for special ed students to have an opportunity to participate in sports.
And mostly high school students, right?
Yes.
And that, that's the transportation? So what would we need a TA to do? Because that was the question. Would we need a TA?
Assist students.
That was the question, that was.
Yes, assist students. You know, especially if we get a lot of students, they might need some support.
The other thing was the Mount Vernon football team. They still going to be playing at the high school? Are we going to be playing at the Memorial Field? Is football season over?
No.
I don't know, is it?
Basketball.
Basketball's. It's finished? Okay. All right, just wanted, I'm just following up. And as far as Mr. Mitchell, as far as the audits were concerned, I don't know how, what he's hearing, but we are doing audits for all the departments, special education, facilities, procurement. What else are we doing? Pretty much everything, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know who he found, who he's asked as far as administration as that we're not doing audits, because we are. Did someone tell him we not doing audit? I know, but he said that someone told him that. Mr. Silver, did you tell him that we weren't doing audits? We didn't need a RFP because we're using out, we're using the auditors we have already.
Internal.
Using internal auditors.
Will you speak to this?
Well, yeah, because he's got up and asked the whole board for what he thought was something you said.
What Mr. Tobin is doing is a risk assessment of each department. He reviews the operations of the department, but he does not review the effectiveness or whether the children are getting their appropriate IEPs managed. He only reviews the operations of the department and makes recommendations and assigns a risk factor to each department between 1 and 100, such as payroll or accounting. He does not look into the inner workings of the department and how they, what they do with the kids, what services they provide. That is not the role of the risk assessment. That's what Mr. Tobin is doing.
Well, I think then maybe Mr. Tobin misunderstood, we misunderstood Mr. Tobin. Because when we had a meeting with him, he said that he was going to do certain things.
We can review it.
Right, am I right?
We should, yeah, we should review it.
We'll review it. I sent him an email.
We should review it.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I have a concern. This could be under old business. Now that it's cold, the concern is for the, for the little kids, for kids that get dropped off in the mornings. And they outside in the cold. What are we going to do to get them inside? Because, I mean, I dropped off my niece, who is what, nine years old? And she had to stand out outside. Now the temperature has changed and these kids are outside. If you go to all the schools, these kids are outside in the cold. Meanwhile, the teachers, they come and they run inside in the, in the warm building. And the kids are left outside until 8:20, 8:30. What is it that we're going to do? Can we, can we have something in place so these kids could go inside? The students, the scholars could go inside while it's cold? Because now the temperature changed. Why are we still having them outside until 8:30 to go into the building?
That matter has already been addressed with the principals to allow the kids to come inside. What security is trying to do now is to get more security people on the inside that when the kids come inside, you have somebody to kind of supervise them. So that's being addressed as we speak.
Okay, and for what time? What time would this, the school be open? Because parents do go to work early. What time would the school be open to drop off the kids?
Well, different school, open different time. So if Lincoln opened at 7:30, then that's when it's going, that's when it's going to be open for the kids to go.
So can it be uniform across the district?
No, they all have different time that they, that they're open and closed.
But, and parents are going to be told when they, when the school is open.
When parents already know when, when their school is opening for their kids. So they just know when to bring them there.
Okay, so what I'm saying is parents are going to be told that the kids are now, they're going to make communication that the kids could go inside the building as opposed to stay outside. Because it's, it's been cold for the last couple of days and kids are outside. Some of these kids are not dressed warm enough.
And if the principals doesn't do it, which I know they will, we can send a letter from central office informing the principals that that's going to take great. And of course, I have my soldiers in the building, my parent liaisons, who can also ensure that this is taking place.
And when would it start?
When should, it's supposed to have started already? So if that's not starting, okay, so I will kind of enforce that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Most schools will take command if they're supervision. They have to be like the bus monitors, they get there or.
I understand that, but it has not been for years. So that's why I'm asking.
Oh, I don't know, but some kids will stay outside if it's two degrees.
It depends.
Depending on the course on that.
There's kids outside and they're cold. And we need to take them inside. So to eliminate the cold, for them getting sick, I mean, and so forth, and spreading germs throughout the school. So we do need to take them in. It's about time that we take them in. It's cold now.
So I will send a general email out to.
Thank you so much.
Remind them, yeah, that this happened. If they need, they need any resource to make that happen better.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Yeah.
So that was the committee reports. Okay. Well, I just had some other, some other, I just want to recognize, I was, I went to the church in back of homeschool for a jazz show a couple of Sundays ago. Excuse me? Is that the Presbyterian? The Presbyterian church, yeah, to see a show. And the, the students, there were some students that performed before the main event. And they were students from Denzel Washington School. I didn't know that they were going to perform. The students' names are, the name of the group is Full Black. But those are the same students, or some of the students were in the soldiers' play at Denzel. So we had, so I just wanted to recognize them and, and give them Brian Buchanan. He played the piano. Damian Price was the drum. Malachi Walton was on alto sax. And we had Davion Price, who was the Mr. Davenport, Lieutenant Davenport, if you saw the play. And Lauren Satchel, she was the assistant director at the play, but she sang vocals. So that was a very good group. And I also wanted to recognize one of our scholars that graduated from Mount Vernon, Denzel Washington School. Her name is Jaleen Seberg. She graduated and, yeah, she got a full scholarship to Howard University. So I just want to shout, give her a shout out too. Don't want to.
And she was supposed to be here tonight.
Was she?
Yes, she was going to speak tonight about her scholarship, what it meant to her. But she's down, so she'll be here at 7:30.
She got the Bozeman, Bozeman scholarship, yes. So I just wanted to give her a shout out. Okay, so we can proceed. We got all that out of the way.
6.1, Cavemotion for approval of proposal to induct Judge William Edwards into the Hall of Fame.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Cavemotion for 7.1, Approval of Human Resources Resolution 71A, certified.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in, question, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion. Cavemotion for 7.2, Approval of Human Resources Resolution Non-Certified. Motion. I need a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stain? Motion carries. So, oh wait, we want to, we want to welcome.
Okay, so now that the resolution has passed, what about this Ramsey? Special ed supervisor.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Ramsey. You want to say something? Come on.
Oh, my God. I need somewhere else to be on the team tonight. And I just want to thank all of you so much for having me join this whole thing. We really appreciate it and looking forward to my next conference.
Thank you.
And I need to say that the district office positions for special ed has been fulfilled. Our next up is business.
Hey, can I have a motion for 8.1, Authorization to revise mentors in their Mount Vernon City School District Mentor Program for new teachers? This is a second revision? Does that motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Cavemotion for 8.2, Authorization to revise staff in the after-school sundown program?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? You said a motion to revise staff.
Yes, so they added.
Oh, this is the one you denied, oh, the name, okay.
Social studies teacher.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Allen, more of the assistant principal, has been deleted.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Cavemotion for 8.3, Authorization to update resolution to hire staff academic power hour after-school programs?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Sorry.
Abstain? Motion carries.
Cavemotion for 10.1, Approval of Student Services Memorandum Number 9, dated November 22nd, 2022?
Motion. I need a second?
10.1. Second, she needs a second? She needs a second? Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Oh, last, last week I did poll 10.1. But I, my questions have been asked.
Okay. All you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Cavemotion for 11.1, Authorization to enter into an agreement with French Fratons, Mount Vernon, to provide three-year-old children with access to pre-K kindergarten programs for the 2022-2023 school year.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Cavemotion for 11.2?
Motion.
Authorization to enter into an agreement with Westchester Community Opportunity Program Incorporated, Westcop, to provide three-year-old children with access to pre-kindergarten programs for the 2022-2023 school year.
Need motion? Motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? So, so it said, where is this program going to be held? Yeah, but it says elsewhere is where their corporate office is. So where, where's the program?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So when contracting a CBL, some of them have multiple sites. So Westcop is a conglomerate. They run over 30 different universal pre-K sites across Westchester County, including Mount Vernon. Mount Vernon, Asnings, Yonkers, et cetera. So when the contracts are drawn up, they are drawn to the main headquarters, sort of like their head center. The full director of the program is the person that signs and executes the contract. This is different from a French Fratons, where there's a sole proprietor and one location. If you also notice, in case a question comes up for Our Lady of Victory, that is executed by the archdiocese. So if there is a CBO that is managed over multiple locations, the main office is the executor of the contract.
Okay. So where is that going to be? Where's that program going to be housed in Mount Vernon? Do you know?
So there are going to be two possible locations. We have some students that are currently in pre-K four, that are in the West Health home. We're also going to offer pre-K treats to those students that are in the shelter, as well as the site at the Bethel Church, which is across the street from Denzel Washington School. Those are brand-new constructed classrooms that we actually constructed last academic year for pre-K four, and we have a new space that has been constructed for pre-K four.
Thank you.
When you say it's across from Denzel Washington, which across? With Sacred Heart, the old Sacred Heart churches?
Right up the street from that.
Up the street, okay.
The Bethel Church.
Okay.
Is that Grace House across?
Yes, next door to it. Okay. Yes. There's like three churches right there. Three churches within the block. I didn't think it was that one. I thought it was the other one. But thanks for clarifying that.
We hope you visit our programs. I hope Dr. B.C. shared the pictures of the students who've come in for intake already. The parents are very thankful. So on behalf of the families, I'd like to thank the Board of Education. The students are officially, once we get approved today, they can start school on Monday, November 28th. And we are very excited, and we will have more information on how the program is going out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for eleven point three. Authorization to enter into an agreement with Our Lady of Victory to provide three-year-old children with access to pre-K kindergarten programs for the 2022-2023 school year.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
I don't think it was the same thing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for eleven point four. Approval of general funds transfers 2022-23, 2023, November 22nd, 2022. Let me get a motion.
Motion.
I need a second. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Is this the same as what we voted on at the last meeting? The transfer funds? Or is this something new, Mr. Silver?
This is, can you all hear me from here? This is to provide additional security services to beef up our security that the superintendent's been trying to do for some time. And these were three salary codes, one for the deputy superintendent, where we talked about that at the last meeting, and another one is coming from the architect, which we no longer have an architect of our own, and the other is coming from an exempt area, which consists of the treasurer, which we don't have yet, and the assistant business administrator that's not paid through this. So these are extra funds. We're struggling to find places to get all the security money that we need, but this obviously is a priority, so that's what we're doing here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for eleven point five?
Motion.
Okay. Authorization to terminate bond.
Abstain.
I need a second?
Who is that?
Second.
Oh, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can I have some clarification?
So Broadspire is the company that manages our liability claims, and the consultants have determined, and we have determined that Broadspire, keeping Broadspire for another year is not in our best interest. During the summer, we did pass something to extend them until we were able to make a decision. So now what we want to do, this resolution allows us to send a 60-day notice to cancel Broadspire, which is required, but this is all written by our attorneys, including this resolution, and allowing us to work with our company PMA, who manages all of our workers' comp claims and has the 70 to help us to move forward. And we're going to, in the next 60 days, we're going to be recommending a new company to replace Broadspire to manage all of our general liability claims. So there's no cost involved in any of this. You're just authorizing us to cancel Broadspire or to give them 60 days' notice, which is required by their contractor, so that we can move forward to find a new claims manager.
Is this the company we met here one night and spoke about the claims, isn't it?
Yeah, the guy was in one, I think.
Yeah, the guy that said over there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Cavemotion for eleven point six. Records access, approval of records access officer?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for eleven point seven? Approval of civil service stipend for the 2022-2023 fiscal year.
So can we get an explanation on that?
Sure.
Oh, wait, can I have a motion?
A motion.
A motion?
I'm sorry.
Wait, yeah. I need a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
So this is a stipended position, which had been in Alice Patterson's realm during all the time she was here. So this is the apportioned stipend of the $4,000, so a third of the year is past July, August, September, maybe more than a third of the year. So she will be taking over the prorated amount from that $4,000 to manage the 2023 election that takes place in May. That involves the hiring of election inspectors, getting the voting machines here, doing all the work on election night, and also preparing for the election and the results of the election. So we've had this for many years, and this is just redoing of an existing stipend to a new person, prorated because she didn't do it for the first part.
But why do we do stipends? This is what she's going to do. Why isn't it just?
This is not her, this is an extra that is not part of the job description of what this person does.
Have a motion out there?
They have a motion out there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. Motion carries.
B.C., I have one question. I got a call from a city council person about the board, that the board has not approved, the board has not approved for them to, I guess, hand out flyers for AIDS awareness at the Dole Center, I think on December 1st. She said the board didn't approve it, or he said the board didn't approve it, and I said, "We didn't see anything like that." Did we not approve it, or did you not want us to approve it, or what's the story?
The Dole Center is not approved.
What happened is that. What happened is that a lot of flyers has been coming into the school district, and the principals have complained that they're not related to anything to do with the school district, period. If we have a joint partnership with our logo on it, then we distribute those. And, because I'm just following past practice. So, but if the logo is not on it for this district, then we just don't do that. So if you want to put our logo on it and we distribute them, then that's fine, but I'm just following past practice.
No, I think what they want to do is important. I think they want to bring AIDS awareness to our students at high school. I think they just wanted to distribute it at the high school, and I don't know if anybody, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know, but do we have to put our logo on it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes, because it's a partnership. When we put the logo on it, that means we are all.
I didn't know that. I didn't know we had to do that.
So if we want to change it, then we have to discuss it and change it, but that's what it has always been.
Well, it's fine with me. I mean, it's up to the rest of the board if that's, I mean.
Where are they passing on at? The Dole Center?
The Dole Center is where the function is going to be, but I believe what I heard was they wanted to hand out flyers at the high schools because, you know, they want to bring AIDS awareness to our high school students.
Yes, right. What happened is that they want our schools to hand out their flyers, you know, because most of the, sometimes the flyers came from City Hall with that, or logo. That means we don't have any partnership with that. And what used to happen, if a logo is on it, then we hand it out. If a logo is not on it, we can be a vehicle to hand out everybody's flyer that come into the district. So we have to make up our mind. Do you want us to hand out all the flyers to the public for everybody? Or do we want us to just be the partnership? You guys have to change that. I'm just following the past practice of if you're not in partnership with you, we don't do that.
I would actually, just my only question would be, depending upon the flyer, do you want to see the flyers first?
Yeah, I think we probably.
I'm just saying, if we're going to hand out a flyer in school, we should make sure it's age-appropriate.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
That's.
Right. And the superintendent always made that decision as whether the flyer is appropriate or not.
That's what I'm saying.
But again, the big part of it, though, that I have been following, is that if the district is not the district, if we are not in partnership with it, then we just don't do it. However, if we see it be fitting and we want to do it, then we have to have that conversations among all of us, that if the superintendent sees it be fitting, then the superintendent sends it out.
But that flyer didn't come to the board, right? That flyer didn't, wasn't circulated.
But it doesn't need to go to you. You have to go to the superintendent. The superintendent is the one who would make the decision as to whether the flyer, yea or nay. But because I was following practice, I did not bring that to you because the flyer was not, has the logo on it. Normally, when the flyer has the logo, I send it to all the board members. But if it doesn't have the logo on it, I don't send it to you because it's not our flyer. So that's what we, from past practice. But if you want to change the practice, that's on, is up to you.
Oh, I don't know about changing the practice, but that particular situation, I think that we probably need to look at it and make a decision from that, right?
Okay.
Because I think that's important for our students to know, you know, not about anybody's fish fry or anything.
Yes.
No. But I did.
Fish fry, that's a different story.
No, but that's, okay. But then again, we have, yes, and I understand that, but we have to stick to what we say we are going to do. We can't just keep flip-flopping. I'm not a flip-flopper. If the school logo is on it, then that's what we do. If the school logo is not on it, is that not what we do? We are not a vehicle to be, everybody who print, right. Right, so we have to stick to what we do. You see, that's what happened with us. We don't have systems in place. So if we are going to start doing things, we got to put systems in place.
Okay.
No, we're not doing it. We're not involved with it, but I guess they wanted to get the high school kids aware of that. So we're going to go into executive session? Yes.
We are?
Yeah, we are. We have Gus here. He didn't come this.
No, he's not.
Excuse me?
You guys have a second?
Yeah, I guess he wants to talk to the board about a couple of things.
Oh, right.
So we're probably not going to come out, but I want to thank everybody for coming out today and have a happy holiday and be safe. Eat well. Don't eat anything that makes you sick. All right, so you guys. She asked a motion.
Can I have a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing history of a particular person or corporation?
Motion.
Second, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
So now have a happy holiday.